The regular session of the 21st Sangguniyang Bayan will please now come to order. May I request everyone to please rise for an invocation to be led by Hon. Moises Dular, and to be followed by the singing of the national anthem and Isulan hymn by the overture, and the counselor's creed to be led by Hon. Darlin' Ich Llama.
Let us put ourselves in the presence of God, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Diyos kamay ng alating balahan, nagadahil ko na kay maya kami sa ibong karon ng adlaw. Inatugya namon sa ibong amon bugos nga lawas ka kang kalag. Inatugya namon sa ibong amon bulaton sa karon ng adlawan. Patawana kami sa amon mga sala, kaya nakasala kami sa orahona. Sa pulong, sa buhat, kasama patumbaya, sa amon obligasyon, kagaroon ng adlaw. Ah, taga iba kami sang kasanag, na kabay pa. Ah, ihatag mugit ang kinaalaw sa amon presiding officer, kagsa amon. Agad ba kayo kami sang tikang, matira ba kaserybisyo kami sa amon katauhan? Kaya nagatugid kami nga ikaw gida ang tutong at Diyos nga nagagiyas sa amon. Panalipte kami sa amon ng adlaw nga panglakato, ipalayo ba kami sa amon mga, sa mga saplagan nga nag ah, eh sa kalimutan. Initanan amon, kinapangayo, akinapangaboyo, pinag-isi mo bugtong naksis si Kristo, amon Diyos. Amen.
Please, please raise your right hand to recite the counselor creed. I am the Philippine counselor mandated by the law to ensure and ordinances that bound to the constituents in their pursuit of happiness, peace, and prosperity. I believe in the public service above self as the guiding principle of my official act and as did my pathways of the legislation. Mighty God, my mind, that my heart, I shall be true constituent in the Filipino people.
Good morning and welcome to our regular session today, September sixteen, September seventeen, twenty twenty-four. May I request our secretary to please do the oral call.
Honorable Carlo Apiado, Honorable Arjen K. Paliasigi, Honorable Moises Dular, Honorable Ryan Dumaran, Honorable Darlin' Lama, Honorable Maria Chinalin Mihia, Honorable Marie Blight Cartuhano Garingo, Honorable Marvin Delanon, Honorable Joffre Durana, Honorable Wiljun Foscablo. Honorable Presiding Officer, so at this moment there are six members who are present. And the four members are absent. Oh, so there are seven members who are present, Your Honor, and three members are absent. So those absent are Honorable Arjen K. Paliasigi, who is still on official leave, Honorable Maria Chinalin Mihia likewise in still on official leave, and Honorable Marvin Delanon. Ah. I, I'm very sorry, Your Honor. So Honorable, uh, Delanon is just outside, Your Honor, and Honorable Marie Blight Cartuhano Garingo, uh, informed the secretary that, uh, she just will be late, Your Honor.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Considering that seven members are present into this session, the chair declares that we have a go room. Next item, please.
So we are now on the reading and consideration of the minutes of the previous session. We have the minutes as of September nine, twenty twenty, for Your Honor.
Before we proceed to the consideration of our previous minutes, we have, uh, our, the presence of our friends from Department of Education, uh, from, uh, Central Isulan District, uh, headed by, uh, our District Supervisor, Dr. Rima Di Magdalao. Rules are suspended to give time to our, uh, visitors this morning to, um, speak before this August body because they have, uh, an important matter to, uh, discuss before, uh, the members of this Sangguniyang Bayan. We would like to, um, give the floor to, uh, si, to Ma'am Rima Magdalao.
Hello. Good morning, everyone. Our respect to our Vice Mayor in the Municipality of Isulan, together with the Secretary of the Sesh, of this, uh, SB, Ma'am Raquel, to Sir Dular, to Sir Ryan Dumaran, to Ma'am Darlin' Lama, to Barangay Captain Llama, to Sir, uh, Durana, to Honorable Wiljun Foscablo. To each and everyone, a pleasant morning. Uh, this morning, uh, as the District Head of Central Isulan District, together with the team, may we have the honor to present the theme for South, for Central Isulan District. We have Ma'am El Faluzada, the Master Teacher II of Impaw Elementary School. We have Ma'am Nainning Sigura, the Alternative Learning System teacher. We have Ma'am Dulce LaCuesta, the District Nurse of Central Isulan District, and the Preschool Principal of Impaw Elementary School, Ma'am Pendon. Uh, we are very much happy that the theme allow us to be present in this session for a very noble purpose. Uh, with respect also to our, uh, SB, to our Kagawad, Sir Dular, which is the in charge of the education. Last Friday, Ma'am El Faluzada, uh, sent, sent the, the approved barangay resolution, asking a favor for the SB to have also a joint resolution in terms of the proposed establishment of Antonio Angaridad Luzada Memorial National High School located at Impaw, Isulan Sultan, Kudarat. We are very much blessed that the couple, Nung Nung and Inday Elpa, generously, uh, give the one hectare donation for the high school. We all know that it is a long, long time dream of the Isulan that in part of Barangay Impaw, there will be a national high school so that we can help the children, especially in their high school level. For a record, in Impaw Elementary School, at this moment, we have forty-two pupils to be graduated in grade six, and in Mapantig, we have sixty-two pupils. Along the way, there are thirty-plus pupils in Dansuli and in other nearby schools which is, uh, in the Central Isulan, uh, district location. So as we visited the place of Mapantig, the most claimor of the parents there is the financial aspect because the National High School in Isulan and in Esperanza is very far from the place and the even, as a history, they even, um, through chit-chat, they even o-offer the land area of the, of the, the land area there of the, of the Kenram. However, upon visiting the place of Impaw and with the generous heart of the Luzada family and really they are ready to give a favor of one hectare, that's why this time we are here to present this as part of the agreement if the local government of Isulan will help in the logistics, in the, in financial and in more often in the proposed establishment of the school. Uh, tududuhan ko dalangid ini kahambal para idiretsuna kayo. Uh, in the resolution, we are asking the full support more on the financial, especially in the building of the classroom. Uh, the regional office and it is one of the requirement of their division and the region to have, uh, titulado na lupa, wala na po tayong problema. The next, uh, requirements, which is the very resilient, is a building, even though it is a makeshift building. Uh, if we have proposed ninety, ninety pupils for the grade seven next school year, preferably there will be two buildings. The region will visit the location if the building is already ready. It is one of the resilient requirements. Next, we have teachers. Along the way, there will be no, uh, there will be no issuance of school ID. Uh, the school ID will be released upon the approval of the documents and upon the visitation, ocular inspection of the original team. So with that, if there will be vol, uh, we know that there are existing teachers in high school and elementary. However, in the matatag curriculum, they are already, what do we called ng, nautilize in the different subject, especially in the catch-up lesson for our learners. So preferably, if this is the establishment of new high school, we need, uh, kahit na four nalang na teacher volunteer. And these four teacher volunteer will be already a, a Pibet passer, let passer, and naka-QA na po for the next school year, and they are qualified. Preferably, we are hiring TLE, uh, English, Science, and Filipino teachers. So one of the proposed that we have is, please help us first in the resurvey or relocation of the one hectare lot. Then number two is, if we can help, uh, for the putting up, building up of building, and the number three, the filling materials before the building, and the number four is the allocation amount for the four volunteer teachers. Yan lang po, and the timeline that we have before January, if makapatayo po tayo, or kung kahit na hindi din matapos sa January or February, because our timeline are more or less at the middle of February, we can let the regional people visit the place so that they can release the school ID. That's all our proposal for that matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, uh, Ma'am Rima. Uh, would like also to recognize the presence of our former colleague, my former colleague in the Sangguniyang Bayan, our former ABC president, Sir Noella Luzada. Tap ma'y aga. Um. Dugay na natin ng handong gindga maga-establish sang, uh, secondary school in areas sang Impaw, Mapantig, Dansuli. Um, just recently, together with Honorable Dular, the Sangguniyang Bayan, and the acting mayor, um. We were able to grace the evaluation inspection of the regional validation team of Department of Education, Sabilla Clara High School. Um. Our intention is to bring education closer to our children, do manang aton ng handong. Um, to bring the government, the services, and its programs closer to the people, and, uh, by establishing a high school in areas, uh, Impaw, um, it would really, ano, realize our dream, ang long dream ni former ABC president during the time when he initiated as, uh, the barangay chairman of, uh, Barangay Impaw. And the gesture of the family by donating one hectare lot intended for the school, daku na ina, nga pasalamatan mas ang LGU and the entire community of Isulan and our neighboring places, kaysa pagkamahal sang properties subong, though seldom ka nalang nga makapangita sang family that, uh, has a big heart to offer for the establishment of the school. The chair would like also to recognize our, uh, a good friend, no, uh, Engineer Ilya Sigura in our session. For, uh. Actually, we already received the resolution coming from the barangay government and, uh. As, uh, observed, ang kabataan naton from Mapantig, Dansuli, and Impaw, kung hindi mag-skuwela drey sa poblasyon sa Isulan, they travel pilapak minuto magsakay sang multikub or sa ilang transport nga vehicle going to Esperanza, do amon to pinakamass accessible sa kadamuan. Um, I happen to witness isa kabata, ang deriman tong area lapit sa may sulod interior pa sang Impaw cap. Ano nga papurok na dra? Everlasting B. Nagab, lakad siya, five-thirty sang kaagahon, magwa sa highway para makahabos sang multikub para hindi sila malate sa ilang klase or sa ilang flag ceremony. Isipunta ang burden nga ilaman nga gina-encounter every day para lang makaavailis ang education. And with this step, uh, we are, uh, hoping and praying na with the partnership of the barangay government, the family of, uh, the Luzada family, the DEP Ed, the district, the district office, the LGU Isulan, the barangay government, and the provincial government, and of course, the national government through DEP Ed, maka mrealize nato ng aton ng dream for the establishment of secondary school. Hindi lang sang annex, hindi isang integrated school, but secondary national high school in barangay Impaw. And, uh, with this, I would like to hear any comment, uh, from the body, Honorable Moises Dular as the Chairperson Committee on Education.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, good morning, uh, to everyone, especially sa aton mga bisita. Of course, uh, ako nabigo, Ay sir Noelia Sigura, and of course, ang aton nga district supervisor, Doctor Rima Magdalao. Kaupot si Mama Imay Pendon, doa raman. Mama Imay Pendon, Principal of, uh, Impaw Elementary School, kay Mama Luzada, kay Mama Sigura, and of course, uh, aton nga former ABC president, Ay sir Nono nga Luzada. So, good morning, Satanan. So, uh, last naman nagtawag sa akon siya, sir Nono, nga magdonate do siya sang lupa para sa Isula, uh, ining, uh, Antonio Angaridad Luzada Memorial High School, no? So, uh, and during sang pagkatoto tadi to vice, uh, Impaw, uh, at that time is may PTA meeting, uh, ginhambal ko sa ya PTA nga maghimok sa resolution, tugig derewit sang barangay resolution. Agad ipasa sa aton derino sa SB para matagaan taman aksyon nga mahimo anta ang Impaw, ang, uh, Antonio Angaridad Luzada Memorial High School, no? So, uh, amunang nga arista subong, ma'am Rima. So, uh, ang pagkabalota subong nga mayara naman na, uh, resolution ang barangay kaga ang PTA siguro ma'am nga napasa. So, uh, uh, amunang aton nga pagka-i-publik haring, ay, committee haring tapa ina siya. Kagagasagihambal kayo na ni Ma'am Rima nga kung ma-approved na ina siya, hindi pa amoy na ang mga problema. May mga sorbyor pa kita nga galastusan, may mga talambakan pilito sa lupa, kaob course ang building. Kaya pag-inspiksiyon sang taga-region sina, kung wala ang, uh, building, hindi kita ma-approved. So, uh, dapat kun na buligantang ining, uh, Antonio Angaridad Luzada Memorial High School, uh, siguro ginatanaw ko nga buligantang as early as possible kay base kun na, nabasa ta nga ang, uh, ining, uh, election band, do mag-start ata January twelve, no? Do, uh, nag-early ang, uh, kuanta, bro, hindi ulambalan kun na sure, nagidina siya nga amunang aton kuwan. So, uh, pressman sang hinimo ta, nga nagbinuligay kita sa Pilya Clara National High School, nga sa, as of now, this school year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, nag-start ng ilang, uh, uh, grade seven, no? So, uh, uh, okay ka kayo, kay ginbuligan man tanan, asta si Ma'am Rima, tanan na si Ma'am Nurun, uh, nagbulig man. So, why not nga hindi nato mahimo, kung magbuligat na'y kita tanan, uh, mag-full force kita. Kaya una-una ang ining hambal kayo na ni Mo Vice nga ining, uh, lupa, tuod mahal na gitsubong. So, uh, nagdonate pagani ang mga Luzada, no? So, uh, pasalamatan dagit ang mga Luzada sa paghatag man sang, uh, among, uh, donates ang isa ka hektarya. Pila na na kamillion kun isipunta. So tungod sae, mayara sila nga tagipusuon nga para git sa, uh, community, para git sa mga postnamlak sang aton kabataan, so nagdonate git sila. So, uh, akon da, uh, Honorable, uh, Chairman, ako na if ever nga mapasa sa committee, uh, buligantatanan drey, kag, tani, about sa mga finances kayo na, for next year, uh, dapat maasap nagidina siya subongin ang mga building kaga mga sorby, kay, uh, ikuanta base mapta ang election ban sa ining atuig. Madamo kasalamat, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you for that statement, Honorable Moises Dular. Uh, we would like to give the floor to our partner, kaupot ko man sa PTA Federation, our former PTA Federation president and a former planning officer of the municipality, uh, Engineer Ilya Sigura.
Uh, thank you, uh, Vice Mayor, no, and to the fellow, uh, yong, uh, mga ISBdri. Actually, I was invited ni, ma, ma, ano, to explain further itong proposed na iskuilahan, no? Because, um, as a resource person also, because being a planning officer before, it is, uh, part of our study before during the time ni first term ni Dado, naginapropose na namon ini siya nga dapat, uh, magestablish kita sing high school uh, sa strategic areas, no? Because ang mga estudyante naton nga nag-graduate sang grade six, specifically from, uh, Dansuli, Impaw, Mapantig, and Dilutilia, ang uniform nila kung aga maglakad kadira, ah, na ka Esperanza. Now, it is an insult sa aton nga capital town nga hindi nato maserybisyoan ining, ining aton estudyante drey, no? And then, ang another nga base sa amon nga study before, ining, uh, part gapon sang la, ang bual, dapat may nasional, may high school gapon dito, no? Now, nakaistorya ako na ni before, ang dati nga supervisor sang, ay, superintendent? Oh, willing man siya, pero ang nabudlayan niya kay ifully establish, pero kung po the meantime para may establish naton nga, nga, maka-operate lang siya, daw ma-integrate lang siya anay sa ano, kay hindi nato siya fully nga operisinal diretso nga high school because it needs mga administrative buildings nila kag, ano, no? Ibi-part lang siya anay sang, daw extension sang national, and then until such time, uh, mga one to two years pwede na sa diretso. Now, amunang ako nga proposal before, dinwelling naman to si ano, ang problema ko lang daw, wala gitto na full support, tapos tinanggal ako sa puwesto. Now, pag, uh, ano ko naman, during sa pagbaliko, ginpropose ko naman ino sa, kay, uh, for, uh, Mayor Teskapunan. Okay naman sa'ya, pero wala lang garing na gulag, no? That is why si Lingkugani nga dapat mapropose kita sing three strategic schools sa Isulan, no? Uh, either sa bual, then Impaw, and, uh, part of Sampaw. Sampaw ko danding ang ma-cutsment area na maserybisyoan, no? Now, hindi lang siguro nga kinanglan support, uh, i-magsuporta kita, dapat i-establish git naton because ang aton nga mga graduates sa grade six, after maka-graduate ang iba na ka-maguntat because wala na sila sing pang-gastos sa layo, no? Now, isalangid ang iskuilahan naton sa high school nga ginakatuhan nila Isulan National High School. Amunagani, naghanda kami sang interview before, pag-prepare namon sang SIUP, nga add it tugig ka mo mag-iskuila sa Esperanza. Anong reaksyon nila? Isa lang karides, sir. Kundiri kami sa Isulan National High School, mamasahe pa sila sa papalingke, papalingke to National High School, mas dubli ang ila ginabayaran. Now, siguro it is a high, high time na siguro, actually, mga five years, ten years na ni, daw kapitan pa ni Sinunong sang una nga gina-encarides ko siya nga, may high school dapat dera nga area, no? Kay kaluluoy, ang aton nga mga graduates sa Dansuli, Dilutilia, Impaw, Mapantig. Now, after graduating sa high school, ang mga parents nila nabudlayan na magpadayon sa ilapag iskuila, pero kung may high school kita dera sa Impaw, Isulan National, uh, Impaw High School, I think maserybisyoan nato. I think maservisuan nato ini sa ilan, no? I hope nga mabuligan nato ang kabataan nato, especially ini mga grade six, no? Na may establish na nato ang high school sa impaw, no? The strategic place nga butangan is in impaw, is in impaw. It is the cutment area of Mapantig, Dansuli and Dilutilia. Maybe later siguro is Kenram. Now, siguro, amunagani ang aton nga supervisor naginvitea sa akin para ma-explain ko man sa inyo as a resource person. And being a planning officer before, no? Being a planning officer before, it is a high time to establish a high school in impaw, no? Para ma-kater nato ang needs sang aton nga mga graduates from this ni Boring barangays. Maybe later in the future, kung kaya nato siguro, high school in the barangay, mas name pa gitt. Pero ang dream ta start alang anay sa strategic location, and then we will expand later. Thank you so much for the support of this is high school, additional high school for Isulan. I hope na ma-realize na ini for the next year.
Yes, thank you for that statement, Engineer Ilyasigura. Actually, this representation, I personally support the, for the establishment of secondary school in impaw. We've done initial steps before when Mam Velmar Pinton conducted and held a PTA meeting sa barangay impaw man. We've attended twice na ma'am, no, nga General PTA Assembly, last year and this year. And for this year, ang aton palang na-operate nga eskwelahan amo ang Villa Clara High School in Villa Clara, barangay Sampaw. And with the resolution coming from the barangay, we will just follow the procedure as required by the Department of Education on how to establish a high school. It needs the commitment of the stakeholders, the community of the barangay, the support from the LGU through the utilization of SEF. We've happened to talk with the acting mayor, Attorney Armada, as regard his commitment for the establishment of the school, secondary school in barangay impaw. Kagga siguro wala mang gitsang, wala sang may magkwestion sang pagpatukod sang eskwelahan. This would be for the benefit of our future, ano, generation sa impaw kagsa ni Boring barangays. Yes, Engineer Ilyas.
In addition also, siguro it's better that the proposed area should be included in the comprehensive land use plan.
Yes, sir.
Because, I'm talking of experience, no? Dapat sa new seat of officers by next year, dapat ma-include sa din ma-approve, no? Kasi ang dapat ang plano natin, it should be smart, specific, measurable, attainable. Now, kung it will be aligned to the direction of the new seat of officer. Kaya nga ini suggest ko before sa ano, nga kung pwede ang silupita, should be aligned with the term sang executive. Kay hindi mo naman mapilit na sila kung if the executive have no intention on the proposed plan. Siguro, there should be an adjustment in the zoning ordinance para ma-include na siya para, kasi kung ang mat- ang ang matabu dira, kung hindi siya ma-include sang silupi, ang matabu da conversion. Now, ang conversion, it will take years, minimum of six months bago mo yan maano, now it will cause delay. That should be, I think I suggest, that it should be included in the zoning ordinance and silupi, no? Kaya ang problema natin sa dati nating zoning ordinance, actually, it was really an ordinance and approved. Kinikwestion doang province kasi hindi na approve ang silupi, pero na approve ang zoning ordinance. Now, the implementing arm of the silupi is the zoning ordinance, and you could not touch the silupi once the ordinance is already approved. Hindi na po natin yan ma-change, no? It will be implemented based on the approved ordinance, hindi na natin magalaw ang silupi, no? Now, that is why I suggest that it should be included in the zoning ordinance of the LGU para ma-tuloy-tuloy na ang implementation kag wala na sing hindrance sa school.
Okay, thank you for that, Engineer Ilyasigura. I saw a while ago, Engineer Dalanon raising your his end.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to each and everyone. Sa information naghihatag sa aton ni Engineer Sigura, we really need to put the one hectare as institution in the silupi. As of now, the evaluation is still ongoing, makapasulot pata siguro sang additional nga area for the institution. But we need the title or the, the technical description of the lot.
Okay, noted, Engineer Marvin Dalanon. And it's high time, at this moment, we are on the process of updating our CLUP. And Engineer Marvin Dalanon, as the Chairperson of the Committee on Zoning, we will take note of that observation, Sir Ilyas. Any more comment from the body? Any more statement? Siguro, ano, can we hear a statement coming from, ano, Sir Noel Luzada? As a representative sang pamilya sa pagdonar sang one hectare lot intended for the high school and as a former ABC and barangay chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sa mga, my former colleagues, but there wala na, isa lang na lang. Sa mga Honorable si Aricaron, mayong aga Satanan. So, sa ambal kay na ni Vice, tama'to, no? During my term as the punong barangay, isa ini kahandom namon, handom kag dumut nga maghigh school ang barangay impaw. Kung makita nato to sa amon comprehensive development plan, arak dito ang amon establishment of barangay impaw. So during the time na nagkita kami ni Mamri Ma, so naupin niya sa akon ini. Siling ko arin na, upin na ni siya. So, naghistoria kami sang magutod. Kukola kamusang problema, kaya ang sa akon nga inhirin siya kay tatay, dito ako magdonate para sa high school. So magani nga, klingko kay Mamri Ma, dapat ipasurbita anay o relocate para at least makita nato kung diin gida ang lupa o ang area nga madonate ko. Kaya side abina sa akon, mayara ng portion sang iasang magulanko, so arak ginasak corner. Bali ang, ang if MR dito binagaskwalan, asa gamna siya. So derin isang portion. So kung madonate, ano to sang magulanko, siguro not more than two hectares maka donate kami. Kay kuwan abin, ano na munang lupa, no? Kung ang mamulus mga kabataan nato, nga arak lang sa palibot, kaysa nagatambay lang. Why? Kay wala man sang kuwan, mulong pamasahe ng adan pa, Esperanza is layo kayo. Kaysa time ko abina, kada aga arak ko na sa highway, mga tricycle, bakato dito buta na, tapload pa na siya. Mga multikab, arak gapon si taas. Subpulpak, so gaisip na gani ko ngay, dapat yman may high school and ri para lang matagaan ang attention ng tanan mga kabataan. Kaysa time ni, sa time ni Mani, ah ni Sir Makasayon, nakapayal na kami dito sang resolution, nakata kami si resolution dito. Even kay Mister Perez, nagtagiya sing ng lupa, gani nga ng twenty-four hectares dira, salong highway. So nakakwan kami, nakapayal, nakapayal kami resolution na mangayos sang bulig sa ila. Kay kung dira ang area, the best get kay halong highway. So ambal ni Sir Makasayon, sige, buligan nato ini, kay pidin asa himo on nga agricultural and technical school, barangay school. So galing hindi to siya na pulgo, kay na wala man nagdonate si Perez sang area. So kung wala dito, so siling ko, ang satambi naman sang opisina namon da sa dar, pidin man sa na galing kay may rice meal. Ti, ah sar dost naman asayat sa mga kabataan. So munang nga ginpropos ko dito na lang sa akon area, more or less siguro mga six or seven hundred meters pa ang dinational highway. So munang nga, mukto na, nagkita ka ni Mamri Ma, okay. Basta lang, ipangalan lang nato kay nanay ka kay tatay, ang eskwelahan. So munapasta, not more than two hectares, relocate lang nato anay ang area.
Thank you for that.
So, mayong aga Satan.
So, okay, dako inang pasalamatan, no, sang banwa kagsang komunidad sa inyong pamilya, Sir Nono, sa pagka, ano, sa inyong gesture sang generosity. Aba'to ambal kay na, sa panahon subong do dito sang ano, do talagsa on na lang maka donar sang amonakadako nga property. Because sa kataas man sang value sang, sang lupa subong, sang property subong. But ang ina siyang gesture, ang kaayos sa inyong pamilya kagsang inyong kaayos. Dako ina ginpasalamatan, hindi lang sang subong henerasyon, but for future generations, that would be a legacy of your family. Not only sa barangay impaw, but to the entire community, hindi lang sang banwa sa Isulan. But nearby places man na gusto magaveilisang good education ri sa banwa nato. Ang amon nga tema sa PTA is for the welfare and security man sa kabataan. Ambal mo kay na, mga kabataan dra sa aton sa impaw, mapantig, kag dansuli, lagan sa kaysang multikab, iban sa tricycle sa taas pa. Although ginabawalan na ina sulinansan nato, pero kung isa ni malikayan, nga wala na gitsang iban nga masakyan ang kabataan. For the safety man sa kabataan, hindi na sila magtravel pasang malayo para lang maka availisang good education. Ang Esperanza National High School, they have more or less six thousand population. Although arak ang quality education, but ang mas conducive for learning pag hindi maginutok pala sa classroom ang kabataan. Kagga, what is important is we have now, this moment, taking our steps, initial steps para sa pagestablishang ah secondary school dra sa impaw. Actually, may arak na matasampasihan, we've already established the Villa Clara High School. Whatever requirements needed, may arak na sang ano na, may guide na kita. During the evaluation sang mga regional officers sang DEP Ed, we already open up, ano, the LGU intends to establish ang high school sa impaw. Initially gani sa area mismo sang impaw elementary, but when Mamri Ma nga nag-message nga the family of Sir Nono Luzada, mag willing magdonate sang area for school building sa high school. And that's a good, ano ni, ah information para sa LGU kag para sa aton tanan. Yes, Engineer Ilyasigura.
Now, in addition also, I happen to talk with the, the school division superintendent, ing bago, si Sir Crispin Sulibin. Inupin ko sa iyang problema, desing ko nga tani mabuligan mo ang school sa pagestablishin ng Isulan National High School. Kay siling ko hindi na kita kinanglan mangita sang mga survey or data. Siling ko arak, pila ang graduate sa Dansuli, pila ka seksyon, pila ka seksyon man sa impaw, pila ka seksyon man sa Mapantig, displaced students ina sila. Ayos niya, ugali engineer, oh. Now, ang aton nga school division superintendent, ang iyang nga suggestion, amgan ito na upin upo kagina nga integrate talang anay para maservisuan sila. Amotong iyang nga kuwan, pero kung may establish gina nato independently, pero it take, oh kung makaya siya, okay lang siya, no? Now, maskin kay Sir Kahar before na upin upo man ini siya, willing man to si Sir Kahar, no? Diba upod patato naghistoria kay Sir Kahar. Kaya ang, ang concern lang gina mon, bilang planning officer before, mag thirty-three years na kita dra, ang estudyante nga displaced pag graduate sa high school, iban naguluntat. Almost, kung paano mang data nila, before, mayara kami data sa planning office, san to nga ang proceed sa high school. San to nga man naguntat because sakalayoon kag accessibility, no? I hope nga maano nato, and then si Sir Bal, ah Sir Sulibin is willing mats kung paano nato maestablish, no? Pero ang donation should be addressed to the DEP Ed, DEP Ed, no?
Yes, sir.
It will be, the full control and supervision of the property will be on the DEP Ed, not on the LGU.
Yes, sir.
Kita magsuporta na lang.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Just to give a background, ang matabo sa Villa Clara High School, we pass a resolution para sa pag-endure, sa pagestablish, and we also passed a resolution para sa Mowa. nga ang commitment man sang LGU, especially sa paghatag sang pondok, from the special education fund for the structure, samtang hindi pa siya ma-turnover fully sa DEP Ed, maging obligasyon sang local government. Doa mo to maging na, ang amon nga legislative action before, we pass a resolution supporting for establishment, endorsed to the school's division superintendent, and we also passed a resolution authorizing the locative executive para sa Mowa sang school and the LGU. Kay for the meantime, mama hindi pa siya na fully turnover sa DEP Ed, ang LGU ari magsalu sa mga, sa operation and maintenance, oriente structure. And ang, ang teachers sang Villa Clara, teachers sang Bambad National High School. Nagpahag ulam sila, napadala sila sang, I think four teachers nga mag manage anay sang school. Until such time nga matagaan na sang national government sang item ang Villa Clara High School. Actually, may mga patay naman tangasundon, if we intend to have a establishment of a independent high school, nga hindi siya mag-under sa integrated school, under man sa supervision sang, sang elementary school. There are advantages and there are disadvantages, but they opted to establish the Villa Clara High School, hindi na sang Villa Clara Integrated School. So.
In addition also, regarding the, the schools, responsibility of the schools in the LGU because of the existing Executive Order number one three eight, the full responsibility, I'm but na-prepare ni Raki lang ang transition plan of that. The full responsibility sa education is ma-hatag na sa LGU, no? Atong devolved, ah transitions ang devolved function of the LGU, the construction repair of the school. Amuning masakit ang ginobra sang national government sa aton because of the mandanas ruling nagdako ang aton nga, nga ira, nga income sa ila, pero ginpadakuhan Manila ang aton nga responsibility sa, regarding the devolved function, no? Masobra sobra, oh, masobra sobra, no? I hope nga ang establishment of the school, ang full responsibility na in the future if ma-fully implemented ang, ang Executive Order one three eight, it will be the full responsibility of the LGU, no? And before, siguro ako nakaano, ang, ang aton nga serman sa transition, devolved transition plan of the different line agencies, our beautiful secretary of the sanggunian.
Okay, thank you for that. Honorable ABC President is recognized.
Yes, good morning, Vice, no, good morning sa aton tanan. So, the proposed high school ay in impaw. Sir, may ano na ba, may tawag, di nakacreate na ba sang magiging name niya sa ano, ah yung ano, ano ba memorial?
They are proposing sir for the name, the parents of our former ABC president, Antonio Ancaridad Luzada Memorial High School.
Okay, ah, the barangay Dansuli, Mr. Chair, is tama tong gihambal nga ang products sang Dansuli Elementary School after their graduates, graduation. nagpa-proceed sila sa Esperanza, no, kay one ride lang. So strategic magid ang ah, barangay impaw, and ah, we also to increase our academic success, no? So, the barangay Dansuli, we support the, the legacy of ah, Luzada sa Memorial ah, High School. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ah, thank you, Honorable ABC President, for that ah, commitment. Ang ilan ang initial requirement lang, thirty-six, ano, students ang required. And ang Villa Clara, subong they have, I think, more than forty, forty, forty students na, para sa pag-establish sang ilang ah, ah, high school, grade seven. Actually, grade seven palang ilang na open, and then by next year, scully year, atong ilang ah, first batch, amo nam, amo naman to ma-grade eight, then they will be accepting more enrollees from ah, other schools man. Yes, siguro, any more statement from, can we hear a comment from ano, from the principal, Mam Velmar Pendon?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and of course, good morning to the different honorables of our municipality, and of course, the visitors and the guests around. So, it is really our pleasure, and we have that great gratitude to all of you that supported this ah, initial move for the opening of Antonio Claridad Luzada Memorial National High School, located at impaw, Isulan Sultan Kudarat. And this time, we are hoping and thanking everyone in advance for the, the ASAP, as soon as possible, opening of the said national high school for the service of the clients, dear clients coming from, of course, Dansuli, impaw, part of mapantig, of course, mapantig and part of Kenram, kasi gatabid lang si Kenram and mapantig. So, we can really expect more than forty, sabi ni forty lang, no? We can expect more than forty ah, students for this ah, coming opening. Hopefully, we will be expecting. So thank you very much, Vice Mayor, Chairman, for the, the mo, the chance to talk. Habuhay tayong lahat.
Thank you, Mam ah, Velmar. Any more statement, Mam, Mam Elfa, or any, ano? Can we hear a statement? Ah, siguro amon iprimi nagyotiguti kay Sir Nong. He's art ang araw sa ano, sa education, no, Mam Elfa is recognized.
So, thank you very much, no, ah, sa aton Vice, sa aton Education Committee Chairman. Kay ara ang presence nila during sa PTA meetings sang impaw elementary school. So, it was already discussed sa PTA meeting, ah, ang support sang PTA, kaga ah, ang LGU man, both ah, barangay and then ah, municipal LGU, ara gid ang na ilang support. So kami, ah, sa family, ah, willing gid nga, ma-establish ang ah, ah, high school sa impaw. So, sa mga papers, mga bulighapon ako, sang ah, trabaho, no? Ah, sa mga papers, ah, kuwan, kaya ginpadasigan na lang, no, gani, special meeting na lang sa barangay, para ma, kuwan dahil, ma-pursu kaagad-agad, ining ah, ah, high school sa impaw elementary school. Ma, so, dreams come true na, siguro. Okay, thank you very much, sa inyo tanan.
Yes, ah, Honorable, or, thank you for that, Mam Elfa, ah, yes, ah, Engineer Iliasigura.
Gey, historya, historya kami ni Mam, ni Mam Rima, no? Ang iya problema is, one of the requirements is dapat mapasurvey na ton, kay dito magbase ang, ang deed of donations sang school, and then, ang five-year development plan, no? Now, considering ah, ang school wala na sing kuwan, pwede na siya gapon nga, that expenses and responsibility i, ano nalang na ton sa LGU, no? For appropriate funding siguro on the relocation, and then, and maybe the planning office could assist in the preparation of five-year development plan of the school, which include the physical ah, development and ah, personnel development sa area. Para later, kung magdaku siya, dapat ma-establish siya, kaga, ma-sustain ang school up to the grade senior high, kumakaya, no? Kayaon din siya, pero ang step by step na ton, first year, tutukan na rin siya anay ma-accommodate ang mga estudyante. I hope nga, the LGU will assist, simple ang aton nga mga teachers, aton supervisor, hindi gin na sila equipped in the preparation of mga five-year development plan, and in the conduct of the survey, there should be an appropriation to be si, ah, funded sa ina nga project as part also of our responsibility on the devolved function sa LGU.
Yes, ah, noted, Sir Ilias, and ah, we will be preparing our budget for next year, and ah, this representation is Sanggunyang Bayan, and Honorable Dular will ah, take note of the observation that ah, we will, ano, um, remind the executive for if funding intended for, um, Antonio Claridad, ah, Memor, Luzada Memorial National High School. Claridad.
Antonio Anclaridad, as in, Anclaridad.
Anclaridad. Honorable Garingo is recognized.
To our guests, I have a follow-up question to, ano, Engineer Sigura, sir. Good morning. Sir, kanino po ido-donate 'yung property to the local government unit of Isulan, or to the Department of Education?
The, ah, my opinion is, it will be on the Dep Ed, no? The full control and supervision sa area, ah, Dep Ed na siya, Dep Ed na siya. Ang aton lang gid ri sa LGU, ng, ang basic na ton nga responsibility, because education is the basic responsibility of ah, LGU. Support talang gid siya, full support. Pero the full supervision and control and management of the area sa Dep Ed. Kay sila ang may specific nga mandate, kung paano siya i, ano, ang mga high schools.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Chair, can I also have a follow-up question to Mam Rima? Mam, what is the exact year target of the commencement of operations of this national high school? Para kung may kapamatig man nga ginikanan, subong mapreparar na nila, no, ang future sang ilang mga kabataan.
Thank you very much, SB. Ang target natin is talagang next year po. Ah, the final na magkakaroon tayo dito ng resolution, ito na po, then after this, magle-letter na po kami sa kay SDS, then iallow na po ang, pwede na po tayo maka-market sa Facebook na i-open na propose establishment of Antonio Anclaridad Luzada Memorial National High School. Pwede na po tayong magpapatayo doon ng malaking tarpolin sa highway, at saka kung gusto ninyo, pwede na rin kayong makapapicture ng team doon, ng LGU, at doon na ilagay, or pwede na rin na-open doon, pero sa marketing natin sa Facebook, from time to time, pag ano po 'yung mga galaw, doon na po yun, para one way of gumagawa tayo ng marketing na, we are really ready to open the school. So, ayun po. Ang follow-up ko din po na, sana nag ah, with the our plea, humihingi po kami ng tulong na, with a timeframe, na matulungan talaga kami, para hindi po ma-delay. Ah, can we set, if the session, if the group will allow us to make a timeframe for every steps that we are going to do? First is the amount for the relocation or the survey, because the deed of donation of the family of Luzada that will be transferred as donated to the Department of Education will be done after the relocation or the survey, re-survey. Number two po, after the relocation, can we have a timeframe wherein, um, we can have already the filling materials for the timeframe? When are we going to have the filling materials for a certain, for a certain po, na portion lang muna? Hindi po na one hectare kaagad 'yung i-filling natin, pero 'yung area lang po, na kung saan pwede tayo makapagpatayo ng two buildings. Kasi ang proposed target po natin is almost ninety pupils. If the grade seven enrolled will be ninety, that means we need two classrooms po. Excluded po doon, ag administrative building muna, yun lang po ang hinihingi talaga ng region na mayroon pong matayo na two buildings, assurance that it is a support from the barangay unit, from the LGU, or the provincial. Pag okay na po yun, when will be now, after the filling? When will be the target na magpapatayo po tayo ng building? Kasi the logistics, the mga papers po, mga five-year development plan, madali lang po iyan, kasi with Mam Ninie, with Mam Indai, madali po, pero hindi tayo makagalaw. If there's no timeframe, when are we going to act on this matter? Thank you po. Basta ang target natin, June next year, mayro na po tayong grade seven doon. Kay after this, letter po, then siguro pag ma-receive ni SDS, bukas ang letter, mag-ask na sang permission, pwede na maka-marketing sa Facebook, at pwede na po makalagay ng, ng tarpolin. With regards sa tarpolin, ubuson ko nalang gid iniha, I have heard that the barangay captain of Dansuli is willing to support, and including the barangay captain of impaw. Maybe in an initial help, the tarpolin, which will be sponsored by the barangay Dansuli and barangay impaw, kahit na gado lang po kalaki, oh, 'yung nandyan ngayon, pwede na rin po doon sa highway, at doon po sa location to ah, make the community aware that we are now on the process of the establishment of the high school. Yan ang po, thank you very much.
Yes, Honorable Garingo.
Um, Mam Rima, ilan po 'yung minimum target natin for enrollees ng grade seven?
For mapantig, we have sixty-two, i-minus natin fifty-five lang. Then for the impaw, forty-two, i-minus natin 'yung dalawa, or thirty-five lang. More or less, we're expecting mga ninety ka pupils for incoming grade seven. For the two palang yan, Mam, na schools, excluded pa yan, ang Dilutilla, at saka Dansuli po.
So ilang classroom po 'yung target natin, Mam?
Hopefully, we can have two classrooms po. Apo, ah, ang requirements lang gani ngayon ng region, kahit na hindi siya fully makeshift lang siya, cementado lang gid ang half, mm-mm. Amo lang gani, na ginapangayo?
Eh, eh, of, of the record, of the record.
Siguro hingi natin administrative, administrative building nila in the future, and additional fence sa other. Kay gusto na ton makita ng initiative, ah, direct talaga nagumpisa sa aton, no? Ang isa ka classroom, siguro, kung hindi ginatun iano ang standard niya, mga four point five million per classroom. Okay na na siya. One classroom, one classroom. Pero ng standard sang Dep Ed, daw five million na siya.
Okay.
Oh, pero ng classroom lang na daw, at least conducive na sa learning, may electric, may electric fan, may suga, may ano.
May comfort room.
Oh, may, why na comfort room na siya?
Honorable ABC President, then, Honorable Garingo.
Ah, yes, good morning, ah, Vice Mayor, no? So before we proceed ah, the construction of ah, national, ah, high school building, ah, it's bitter siguro for the relocation of area, no? Why not na ang ah, August body, mag-sponsor na lang for the relocation of ah, the property of ah, Mr. Luzada?
Mr. Chair, pwede magsaligbat, sir, may budget to sa mayor's officer ba? For purposes of like, ano, titling and et cetera? So okay na yun, sir? Sure ko may bilin gitto, sir, ba? Of the record man ta, sir, no? Kay ang sa relocation, ah,
Tanin na ton, atong palingki na ton, ma-transfer na, ni municipyo ma-transfer na daw, pilaganito, turnia?
Siya, duking five hundred, gani.
We have yearly budget for titling and ah.
Now, siguro pwede na na ton ma-start up na dito, dito na sakwaon ang pondo with the approval siguro sang council, dito na na ton makuha. And then ang preparation siguro sang five-year development plan, hindi naman ginising dakugid ang ilang ano, through the assistance sang planning office, basi ma-bagitan pagyapon na ton, no? That is, ang requirements for the pre-establishment is the deed of donation, kag survey, and then five-year development plan. Pag na-approved na ang ano, construction siguro, it should start in January, because it will take ang usual na completion sang classroom is mga one hundred, pila to?
One twenty.
Basta three months, three months siya, ma, ang usually, because may curing, pabing mga si Binto, three months siya. Asta ma-pully, kung makastar tayo, January, March, tapos na, pero usually, hindi naman sa makastar bidding pa na ton, mga kuwan, mga February, March, dapat mag-start na ang construction. Para pag opening sang class, kuwan na siya, ready na ang site, ang school.
Yes, sir, um, a while ago, na-mention ko tong Mowa, gani, ah, may araw sang memorando of agreement from the LGU and the Dep Ed, atong i-establish nga school. Kung ano ang manging na support sang LGU, ah, what happened sa establishment sa Villa Clara Elementary School? In state nila dito, kung ano maging role, sang ah, local government? Kaga ano man maging role sang national, sang Dep Ed, ano maging role sang school? At least may, ang aton nga commitment, hindi lang siya, ano, ma, ma, maput into writing na ton. Ah, hindi man ako makahambal in behalf kay acting mayor, but knowing the acting mayor, supportive man na siya sa sininga mga initiatives, Mam. Kaga, ano, ah, let's assure the our commitment, what is important is we have these initial steps. Ah, we will pass a resolution addressed to ah, the school division superintendent, and after this, ah, may mga several documents man require ang SB, ah, like for example, the Mowa, we will authorize the acting mayor to enter into Imowa sa Dep, with Dep Ed. we will authorize the acting mayor to enter into Imoa sa Dep, with Dep Ed, and ah, kung sino pa inyo, ah, anong, anong high school ang mag-provide sang teachers sa atong eskwelahan. So it will be written under sa sulud ta konting sa Maua. Honorable Garingo is recognized.
Um, sir, there was a mention earlier of the election ban on construction projects. For next year, it will begin on March twenty-eighth pa, March twenty-eighth until May eleven, twenty-twenty-five. And I would just like to take this opportunity to congratulate, um, the Dep Ed personnel. Kasi the most difficult part of starting a project is the first step. Mahirap talaga mag ano ba, mag, would like magti kang sa una. And also like to congratulate and give our thanks to the Luzada family, kay sir Nonong. Nang kabaluman kami sir ba na ang one hectare, kurut lang man 'yan, no? Do's ring gani, sang mama ni Carlos, yun, kurut, hindi kayo aaray, pero one hectare, sir, is still one hectare. Napakalaking tulong kids sa Banwa sang Isulan. Um, the name of your family will live forever as long as the, that school will exist. So it's a very good legacy, no, na maano ninyo, mabilin sa, sa barangay Impaw. Damo gid nga salamat, sir.
Thank you. And ah, also, we would like to ano, to express our ano, extend our greetings of Happy Teachers' Day sa ato ng mga pinalangga ng mga teachers. We, ah, September five up to October five, we will be celebrating our teachers' month. So kay ma'am Rema and to all the teachers here present, Happy Teachers' Day sa inyong tanan. Okay? Amo rin siguro pinaka one of the best gifts ka mahatag sang family Luzada to ano, to our community for donating and ah, um, sharing their property, hindi lang sa ila pamilya, but to the entire community sa Banwa sang Isulan. So any more comment from the body? Honorable Nonong Luzada is recognized.
Salamat, liwat. Na, na, na-mention naton kay natong timeframe, no? Kasi ang area ko is tenanted. So ginaiseryahan ko na sila ang, ah, wala akong mahatag sa inyo. Kay hindi ini baligya kundi donation. Do, maluoy man ako sa inyo, ay kumahimo, ang aton lang sini, ang buwas damlag sa inyong kabataan. So muna gani nga, dapat may timeframe kita, kay tumo, tenanted siya. Ah, at least mabalan naton kung san ugid bala, kung magpadayon pasila sikan cropping o hindi na. So muna ang gusto namunabalan ba. Hmm, then, ah, na, nagsee nga, naghambal ako nga, not more than two hectares, kasi gina-pursi ko na, kung anong matabo direk sa high school. So kinangan naton, ang gym, kinangan naton, ang playground, so muna nga, nakambal ko, not more than two hectares. Dapat early man makita, maka, ah, relocate para mabalan ginaton kung dinasta ang amon nga area nga ma-donate. Then sa surveyor, daw sa survey, kuwan eh, kung relocation lang, daw not more than ten thousand at ano, not least than five thousand. Kay daw, kay engineer daw, 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 dres kalawag uno, may tulay banda, daw five thousand at ang relocation eh. Ang sabi, ang kuwan. So pwede tama na si rumangyo, si, malum, dati na surveyabi nila na, sa aton lang, i-relocate liwat, para ma-exact na lang gid siya kung din, dinkuto bang area. So muna na, salamat kit.
Siguro hindi natan magproblema sa mga surveyor kung pila man na sukot nila as long as it is legal, kaga within the, ah, standard, ah, permit, may kuwan man ta kwartad ri sa LGU. Sayang lang ng aton nga every year na bagitan na sang LGU before para sa titling, kag relocation sang area naton, hindi man ma-gastos-gastos. Now sayang lang, gamit on tanatong subong, no? It's siguro, ay time na. Wala na ta problema kung pila na ang sukot nila as long as it is legal, kag within the standard nga panukod sang judetik engineer, no? Kami nga si bilis engineer, kaya man na man na surveyon, man na ganisling ni, ni engineer dala nun kag ni, ni ABC nga, kaya man na namon magconduct sang survey, pero ang, ang authorized na karoon magpirma abi, it should be the judetik engineer, no? Now, wala ta question siguro sa kung pila ang amount kapira, ang ginanglan, because sa aral lang da ang pundo, kaysayang lang na, gina, kadatuig, gina-bagitan naton, next year bagitan naman naton, wala na gamit, no, pila na katuig, no? Because ang intensyon sinasat to paghistorian namon ni Mayor Palasigi, nga dapat mahali na sa municipyo ang mga properties nga na ka-munisipyo, ma-transfer na sa ngalan ka-munisipyo, no? And then ang nagriyang gani namon satong, ah, si attorney, legal officer naton mag-process, milay mag-process sa ato nga para ma-transfer na tanan-tanhan 'yung property, amuna sa ganikin bagitan sa sing dako, dako, no, para wala na ta problema in the future.
Ah, Vice, can I add on? So can we set the date, bakit na mga next week, para sa relocation? Vice, pwede po?
Um, bali po sa ano, ah, sa end ng SB, as a legislative body, kami magpasang mga legislative actions, but with regard to the survey, we will talk with the office of the mayor. It's under his jurisdiction and under his function. Hindi man namon gusto mag-overlap kay mayor sang among, sang iyang function, kay it's part of the executive function. But then again, we will help you, ah, lobby with the mayor as regard the funding, as regard the request for the survey and the relocation. Ang sa, amo lang makumit is ah, sa akon ng end, as a parts ng sangganyang bayan, we will help pass a resolution or any legislative action to this matter for establishment, but atong sa, sa funding naman, mo support man kami for the approval of the fund, but as to the utilization, we will ah, siguro ask the courtesy sa office of the mayor for any ano, any help, any need, nga kinangalan naton.
Okay, thank you po. Then with the, with the regards naman dito sa ano ni sir Nonong, ang hambal ko gani, nang hindi man siya tanan, even though nga ma-relocation, ma-resurvey siya, hindi man na siya tanan anay magamit as a building. Ang aton lang nga i-fill-inan sang filling materials sa kabaluman ni si CS ng ano, si Sir Dular sa Education. Atong portion lang, nga may portion tayo, siguro mga one-fourth or ano na, nga may portion kita nga para mapatindugan sang building. With regards sa building, kung sa January pa siya, ato ng January, February, March, daw kaubol na siya, kung pakadtoon naton ang aton nga mga bisita from the region sa March or April, kasi ano po siya, 'yung, ah, pagka, ang target kasi natin by June or July, marilis na 'yung school ID. If marilis na po 'yung school ID ng school, mapasok na po sila sa LIS, magkakaroon po sila ng MOOE. Umpisa lang po tayo, so kaya nga sabi ko kanina, kahit na hindi muna concrete, semi-concrete lang nga ang half pa simentado nga makita lang nila nga may nagatindog nga building, kay hindi sila maglakat kung wala saang building. It just happened in, kung makita din ninyo no doon sa Villa Clara na hindi gin siya concrete, yun lang po ang hinihingi nila. Thank you po.
Yes, ma'am. Um, as regard naman dun sa, sa structure o sa building, ah, again, we will lobby with the ano, office of the acting mayor. Ah, I happy to talk to acting mayor as regard sa funding, and I na-story ako man si Municipal Treasurer as member naton sa local school board. If there are unutilized funds coming from the SEF for the previous years, pwede man siya ma-reprogram. But then again, no, depende naman sa local school board kaya acting mayor ang sapaga approves ang aton nga request. But then again, ma'am, no, ah, upod kami, mag-upod kami sa inyo sa paglobby. Honorable Ryan Gomaranis is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Chair, and a good morning. Ah, I believe, Mister Chair, this, ah, ah, proposal will be referred to the, ah, committee, proper committee for a further study and that to be, ano, ah, para mas maplanuhan pa basang mayo.
Um, off the record. Clarification from the body. So if wala na, no, ah, we would like to express our appreciation and gratitude to especially to the family of Sir Nonong Luzada, palapakan naton, for, ano, ah, their big heart for our community, no, sir Nonong. Ah, salamat gid no sa inyong kaayaw, no sa aton nga, no, sa aton nga komunidad, sa aton Banwa, for donating a portion of your property for the establishment of Antonio Caridad and Caridad Luzada Memorial National High School. And to ma'am Rema, to ma'am Mendon, to, ah, to ma'am Dulce, to ma'am Elfa, and to ma'am Ninie. No, salamat no sa inyong presyo sa subong aga, and, ah, looking forward, no, para atong gid ma-realize sini siyang, ah, initiative. This won't remain as a dream, kay ma-realize, kay ma-materialize nagi siya. So congratulations to all of you, to all of us, and, ah, looking forward for more collaborations and partnerships sa mga programa sa Department of Education in the near future. Okay? Ah, sige po. Can we have a photo opportunity together with our, ah, visitors? Rules restored. We are now on the reading and consideration of our previous minutes. Can we flash on our screen the, ah, copy of our previous minutes? Any question or clarification as to our, ah, previous minutes? Honorable Dular is recognized.
Ah, Mister Chair, if there's no, ah, question or a comment about the previous minutes, I move forward to adoption.
There is emotion for the adoption of our previous minutes, Julie seconded. Any objection? Hearing none? Our minutes dated September nine, twenty-twenty-four is hereby, ah, adopted. Next item, Madama Secretary.
So we are now on the privilege hour, Your Honor.
Any member who wants to render a privileged speech? So, there being none, let's, ah, proceed.
So we're now on the first reading. So, ah, the first item is the proposed ordinance institutionalizing the mental health care program in the municipality of Isulan, establishing mechanisms and guidelines for the implementation adapting certain provisions of Republic Act 11036, appropriating funds thereof and for other purposes.
Please refer that matter to the Committee on Health.
Then item number two, letter received from the office of the mayor requesting for appropriate action. This is as regards the utilization of the solicitation fund and stall rentals collected during the HAMONGAYA Festival 2024.
We've discussed this during the previous session that we're asking for a request coming from the executive. If they opted to have this, ah, fund.
Item number three, resolution number
We, we, ano, we, we discussed this matter, the request. Item number two coming from the office of the mayor requesting for appropriate action. Can we write, Madam Secretary, can we make a letter address to the office of the mayor as regard what transpired during our discussion as regard the discussion on the solicitation fund? I suppose the solicitation fund of the record. Please, Ma'am Rox, hindi natin maghihingma sanganglet. Refer this matter, item number two, to the Committee on Finance.
Well taken, Your Honor. So, item number three. Resolution number 24, Series of 2024 of Barangay Bambad, requesting the honorable acting mayor for a cockfighting permit for the Fiesta celebration of the barangay to be held on September 24, October 1st, 8, and 14, 2024.
Schedule this matter for second reading into the session.
Item number four, resolution number 2024-13 of Barangay Impaw. This is resolution supporting and endorsing the request for the establishment of Antonio and Caridad Luzada Memorial High School at Barangay Impaw, Isulan Sultan Kudarat.
For second reading.
Then item number five, the supplemental budget number two for calendar year 2024 of Barangay Mapanti.
Refer this matter to the Committee on Finance.
So we have no more items under first reading, Your Honor. We'll proceed now to the committee reports. The Committee on Transportation, Communication, and Energy will render its report.
The chairperson of the committee is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning once again. The committee report of the Committee on Transportation, Communication, and Energy, committee report number 2024-2. Refer matter to this committee. A committee hearing was conducted on September 12, 2024 at 9 o'clock in the morning at the office of the Sangkunyang Bayan Session Hall, Isulan Sultan Kudarat. Present during the committee hearing were Mr. Leonori Typin, the business permit and licensing officer, officers and members of Kenram Tricycle Operators and Drivers Association, and the members comprising this committee. The item, the resolution number 0052, Series of 2024 of barangay Kenram. A resolution assigning all members of the Kenram Tricycle Operators and Drivers Association, Kenram Toda, to 7-Eleven in front of provincial hospital and all jurisdictional areas within barangay Kenram, exclusive for Kenram Toda. Discussion and findings. The barangay council of Kenram passed and approved resolution number 0052, Series of 2024, entitled "A Resolution Assigning All Members of the Kenram Tricycle Operators and Drivers Association to 7-Eleven in front of provincial hospital and all jurisdictional areas within barangay Kenram, exclusive only for barangay, for Kenram Toda." This resolution is a sentiment of the barangay for they have recognized the Kenram Toda as an association of tricycle operators and drivers within barangay Kenram. Passing of such resolution is for a reason to ensure that the transportation services within barangay Kenram, particularly in key areas such as the 7-Eleven convenience store and other strategic locations, are provided exclusively by the members of the Kenram Toda to maintain order and regulate operations. Additional reasons is that the exclusivity of these services within the jurisdictional areas of barangay Kenram will provide a livelihood security for the members of the Kenram Toda and to also contribute to local economy. Under the resolved further clause of the resolution, it states that resolved further that no other tricycle operators and drivers outside of Kenram Toda shall be permitted to operate in these designated areas within barangay Kenram. According to the business permit and licensing officer, the Kenram Toda could not have a sole operation within barangay Kenram considering that the tricycle operation is open to all and open to all owners and operators of tricycle, even if those owners and operators of tricycle are not members of the Kenram Toda. They are free to operate everywhere and anywhere in barangay Kenram, not just in 7-Eleven convenience store and other strategic locations as long as they have franchise and permit to operate their vehicle units. Upon inquiry from the Kenram Toda, if they are officially accredited as one of the associations of the municipality, they were answered in the negative. For this reason, the chairperson of the committee advised them to apply for accreditation in this yanguyang bayan to be recognized as one of the non-government association of the municipality. The Kenram Toda replied that they will process the papers for the matter. The recommendation, where fore premises considered, the committee hereby recommends to return the resolution to the barangay within the foregoing recommendation that they shall apply for accreditation in this yanguyang bayan and to emphasize to them that tricycle operation is open to any interested Filipino citizen subject to the compliance of all pertinent laws, rules, and regulations. Respectfully submitted the Committee on Transportation, Communication, and Energy, urstolli the chairperson, Honorable Darlene Islamah, vice-chairperson, and secretary, Honorable Jinke Pallasigi. That all my report, Mr. Chair.
Any clarification or question as regard to the committee report? If there's none, what's the pleasure of the committee?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I will move for the committee report of the transportation, for adoption of the committee on the transportation, communication, and energy.
There is emotion for the adoption of the committee report. Julie seconded. Any objection? So hearing none. Committee report number 2024-2 of the Committee on Transportation, Communication, and Energy is hereby adopted. Next item, Madam Secretary.
Next committee to report is the Committee on Peace and Order, Human Rights, Public Safety, and Disaster Risk Reduction and Management.
The chairperson of the committee is recognized. Honorable Mayas Dular.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, ah, the Committee on Peace and Order, Human Rights, Public Safety, and Disaster Risk Reduction and Management, committee report number 2024-01. Pursuant to the referred matter to this committee, the public hearing was conducted on January 18, 2024 at 10 o'clock in the morning at the exhibition hall. Present during the public hearing were the PNP personnel of Isulan Municipal Police Station, Bureau of File Protection, Isulan personnel, BGMP, Isulan District Jail personnel, the business permit and licensing officer, Mr. Leonori P. Typin, barangay official, officials, business establishment, and members comprising the committee. Item, memorandum from the Philippine National Police, subject adoption of the proposed ordinance to supplement the penal provisions of EO Number 297, Series of 2000, entitled "Regulating the manufacture, sale, distribution, and use of PNP uniforms, insignias, and other accoutrements and consistent to the CPNP's five-focused agenda on aggressive and honest law enforcement operations and community engagement." Discussions and findings. The committee chairman started the hearing stating the purpose to discuss the referred matter, memorandum from the Philippine National Police, subject adoption of proposed ordinance to supplement the penal provision of EO Number 297, Series of 2000, entitled "Regulating the manufacture, sale, distribution, and the use of PNP uniforms, insignias, and other accoutrements and consistent to CPNP's five-focused agenda on aggressive and honest law enforcement operations and community engagement." The PNP has provided the draft copy of a proposed ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Mandating All Businesses Operating Within the Territorial Jurisdiction of the municipality of Isulan engaged in manufacturing, sealing, or distributing uniforms, insignias, and other accoutrements of PNP to secure PNP certificate of conformity and prescribing penalties for violations thereof." During the course of the hearing, there was a suggestion to revise the title of the ordinance after due discussions and deliberations. It resulted to the following edition of the proposed ordinance now entitled to read as follows. "An Ordinance Regulating the Use, Manufacturing, Sale, and Distribution of Uniforms, Insignias, and Other Accoutrements of Uniform Law Enforcement Agencies in the municipality of Isulan Sultan Kudarat and Prescribing Penalties for Violation thereof." The proposed ordinance will address the authorized manufacture, sale, use, and the distribution of uniforms, insignias, and other accoutrements of uniformed law enforcement agencies which pose serious concerns as such symbolic identifiers instead of providing comforting sense of security could be used by lawless elements in their unlawful and illegal activities within the municipality. Under the Probated Acts, the proposed ordinance provides that only business establishments with a business permit and certificate of conformity in this municipality shall be permitted to engage in the manufacture, sale, and distribution of uniforms, insignias, and other accoutrements intended for use by uniformed law enforcement agencies. This requirement also extends to enterprises involved in the supply chain of raw materials for production of the mentioned items. Further, that no individual shall use or wear uniforms, insignias, or other accoutrements if they are not members of any uniformed law enforcement agency except when duly authorized. The rules and regulations as per ordinance. All business establishments involved in production, manufacture, storage, sale, distribution, or possession of uniforms or other accoutrements shall secure a certificate of conformity to be issued by the concerned law enforcement agency. This certificate shall serve as a post-permit compliance for all businesses after the issuance of a business permit. Such business establishments shall record any transaction including details of their distribution of uniforms and other accoutrements. All accredited establishments shall require members of law enforcement agencies in this municipality to present their official and valid enforcement agency identification card prior to any purchase. Any person other than members of law enforcement agencies who wish to purchase uniforms or accoutrements shall be required to show authorization or purchase from their immediate superior and present photocopy of the official and valid identification card for the provincial buyer and a person authorized to purchase on their behalf prior to any transaction. The prospective wear of uniform or other accoutrements of law enforcement agencies shall be required to apply for authorization for use, fully citing purposes authorized under Republic Act 493. All law enforcement agencies in this municipality shall submit to the business permit and licensing sections, BPLS, a negative list of registered covered establishment who failed to secure the certificate of conformity. The BPLS, in coordination with law enforcement agencies, shall periodically conduct joint inspections of covered business establishments requiring the representation of their respective business permits and certificate of conformity. It is prohibited to use any uniform or accoutrements of any government law enforcement agency for purposes other than this covered by the issue, authorization of use. This is 1616 of the Local Government Code of Republic Act Number 7160, also known as the General Welfare Clause, provides in parts that every local government unit shall ensure and support the maintenance of peace and order within the respective territorial jurisdiction. Number two, Republic Act Number 493 regulates the wearing, using, manufacturing, and sealing of insignias, decorations, medals, badges, patches, and identification cards prescribed for the armed forces of the Philippines and Philippine Constabulary, now the Philippine National Police, by persons not in the service. Article 177 of the revised penal code prohibits any person from falsely representing himself as an officer, agent, or representative of any department or agency of the Philippine government. Executive Order Number 297, entitled "Regulating the manufacture, sale, distribution, and use of PNP uniforms, insignias, and other accoutrements," was signed on October 4, 2000 to control and manage the unauthorized manufacture, sale, and distribution of PNP uniforms, insignias, and other accoutrements. Number five, executive order Number 297 imposes as penalties the immediate closure of establishment, cancellation of business license or permit, condemnation, seizure, and forfeiture of unauthorized items, and imposition of reasonable fines for violators for recede order all with, of which could be undertaken by the local government units concerned. Number six, the Philippine National Police Directorate for Research and Development, PNPDRD, has issued a DRD standard updating procedure Number 2020- twenty-twenty dash zero zero one prescribing the procedures and the guidelines in handling of samples of PNP uniforms and the acotryments to ensure the integrity of the submitted samples as basis for issuance of certificate of conformity. Recommendation where four premises considered, the committee hereby recommends passing an ordinance regulating the use, manufacture, sale, and distribution of uniforms, insignias, and other acotryments of uniform law enforcement agencies in the municipality of Isulan Sultan Kudarat and prescribing penalties for violation thereof. That further does it ensure be delivered on second reading decision respectfully submitted by the Committee on Human Rights, Public Safety, and Peace and Order Disaster Reduction Management, your story as chairperson and Honorable Ryan M. Domaran as a vice chairperson. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Any clarification as regard the content of the committee report of the Committee on Peace and Order? If there's none, what's the pleasure of the committee?
So, Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of my committee report number twenty-two-four dash zero one.
There is a motion, Julie seconded, any objection? So hearing none. The said committee report of the Committee on Peace and Order, Human Rights, Public Safety, and Disaster Risk Management, committee report number twenty-two-four dash zero one is hereby approved and adopted and scheduled for second reading into this session.
Next committee to report is the Committee on Good Government, Ethics, and Labor and Employment.
The chairperson of the committee is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are two items to be discussed in this committee report. The first is with respect to the letter received from the Office of the Mayor addressed to the acting Vice Mayor Presiding Officer forwarding a copy of MCDC Resolution number one series of twenty-twenty-four, and the second is a letter received from the Office of the Mayor addressed to the same acting Vice Mayor requesting for the urgent passing of ordinance for the creation of the plantilia position for veterinarian. The committee hearing for this matter was conducted on September nine, twenty twenty-four and invited during the same were the HRMO, the municipal agriculturists, and representatives from the Budget Office including the members of this committee. So here are our discussions and findings. Item number one, this is with respect to the endorsement of the Office of the Mayor of MCDC Resolution number one series of twenty-twenty-four, a resolution earnestly requesting our beloved acting mayor and the members of the Sanggoyang Bayan for the creation of the position of MCDO Municipal Cooperative Development Officer. The MPDC manifested that the MCDC rather manifested that there is an urgent need to create the position of municipal cooperative development officer to provide technical assistance and support on the economic development and business continuity and sustainability of the cooperatives in the municipality of Isulan. It finds basis in joint memorandum circular number twenty-nineteen dash zero one entitled Cooperative Promotion Organization and Development on Local Government Units which provides that the delivery of the basic services to the public has been transferred to the LGUs including the support to the development of the cooperatives in their respective areas in accordance with state policies on cooperatives pursuant to the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety-one. According to section four of RA eleven-five-three-five known as an act making the position of cooperatives development officer mandatory, it states that the appointment of the cooperatives, the municipal cooperative development officer is mandatory for the municipal, city, and provincial governments. The role of the MCDO is to take charge of the development of co-ops registered with the CDA or the Cooperative Development Authority. According to the list of registered cooperatives in Isulan, there are thirty-six registered co-ops in the municipality as of December twenty twenty-three, and only fourteen of these are compliant, which means that more than half are either dissolved or non-compliant. Item number two is with respect to the request of the acting mayor for the creation of the plantilia position for veterinarian. The municipal agriculturists explain that there is a need to create the position of veterinarian to properly address all concerns regarding the livestock sector. The livestock industry in Isulan continues to flourish and develop as more and more farmers venture towards livestock raising to augment the income of their families. However, the presence and recurrence of contagious and economically important diseases continue to threaten this thriving industry. Among these diseases are the AF, ASF, or African fine swine fever, and avian influenza and rabies. The ASF is currently affecting the hog racers in several barangays in the municipality, while the avian influenza and rabies which are zoonotic can be transmitted to or infect humans. As of present, the agriculture, our municipal agriculture, agriculturists addressed all those concerns as they have a licensed vet from their ranks. The duties and responsibilities of a veterinarian are laid down under the Local Government Code, particularly section four-eight-nine. The said veterinarian who is currently stationed in the Office of the Municipal Agriculturalist however is handicapped and may face technicalities in performing those duties and responsibilities as he is currently holding the position of senior agriculturist and is mandated to perform the duties of that position. It is therefore requested to create an item commensurate to his qualifications in order to maximize his potential as veterinarian and in turn contribute to the thrust of the local government to sustain productivity and profitability of its of its constituency and food sufficiency. It is recommended by the HRMO that the position of Vet Four with SG twenty-two is recommended for the position of veterinarian. While for the position of municipal cooperative development officer, what is being recommended is salary grade eighteen. According to the municipal, the representative of the municipal budget officer, the creation of these positions is still within the PS cap limit of the local government unit for next year. Wherefore, premises considered, the committee hereby recommends passing a resolution enacting an ordinance creating the following positions: one veterinarian for with SG twenty-two and one municipal cooperative development officer with SG eighteen, providing for their duties and functions, appropriating funds therefore, and for other purposes. Further, that the said measure be deliberated on second reading next session. Respectfully submitted by the Committee on Good Government, Ethics, and Labor and Employment with his representation as chairperson and Honorable Darlene H. Lama as vice chairperson. That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Any question or clarification as regard the committee report? So if there's none, what's the pleasure of the committee?
I move for the adoption of committee number six of the Committee on Good Government, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion for the adoption of the committee report number twenty-two twenty-two forty dash zero six, any objection? So hearing none, the said committee report is hereby adopted. What's the pleasure again of the committee?
We move that it be calendared on second reading this session.
And this committee report is scheduled for second reading into this session. Next item, Madam Secretary.
So there are no more scheduled committee reports, Your Honor. We'll proceed now to the calendar business under second reading. So first we have the item, the proposed measure based on item number four of the first reading which is the proposed, the request for the passage of resolution. A resolution supporting and endorsing the request of the establishment of Antonio Ancaridad Luzada Memorial High School at in barangay impaw Isulan Sultan Kudarat.
Honorable Dolar is recognized.
Mr. Chair, on a due win sponsorship, I move for a resolution supporting and endorsing the request for the establishment of Antonio Ancaridad Luzada Memorial High School with a attach of a barangay resolution twenty-two-four dash zero thirteen of barangay impaw.
There is a motion, Julie seconded, any discussion? Amendment, objection, hearing none? A resolution is hereby passed supporting and endorsing the request with establishment of Antonio Ancaridad Luzada Memorial High School at barangay impaw Isulan Sultan Kudarat. Honorable Alagaringo is recognized.
Mr. Chair, considering that we have all agreed to this resolution and considering its importance to our education sector, may we move that this resolution be passed in joint sponsorship of all members present?
Will it be okay to the proponent in joint sponsorship of all members present? Please put on the record, Madam Secretary.
Well taken, Your Honor.
This matter is a joint sponsorship of all members present. Any more item under second reading?
Next proposed measure on second reading is based on the committee report of the Committee on Peace and Order, Human Rights, Public Safety, and Disaster Risk Reduction and Management. So, Your Honor, we have the proposed measure based on item number three of the first reading which is the request for a permit to hold a kak fighting for the Fiesta Celebration of the barangay of barangay Bambad on September twenty-four, October one, eighth, and fourteen, twenty twenty-four.
Honorable Arnold Llama is recognized.
I move resolution number twenty-two-four, number twenty-fourth twenty, twenty-four of barangay Bambad requesting Honorable Arnold Icharmada, acting municipal mayor for kaking permit for the Fiesta Celebration of the barangay to be held on September twenty-four, October one, eighth, and fourteen, twenty twenty-four.
There is a motion, Julie seconded, any objection? So hearing none. Resolution number twenty-four series of twenty twenty-four of barangay Bambad requesting Honorable Arnold Icharmada, acting mayor for ikak fighting permit for the Fiesta Celebration of barangay Bambad to be held on September twenty-four, October one, and eight, and fourteen, twenty twenty-four is hereby granted. Next item, Madam Secretary.
So we have the proposed measure based on the committee report of the Committee on Peace and Order, Human Rights, Public Safety, and Disaster Risk Reduction and Management.
Honorable Dolar is recognized. Can we flash on our screen the draft ordinance?
So, Mr. Chair, if there's no question about the uh ordinance, I move for a passing of an, or a resolution enacting an ordinance regulating the use of manufacture, sale, and distribution of uniforms, insignias, and other acotryments of uniform law enforcement agencies in the municipality of Isulan Sultan Kudarat and prescribing penalties for violations thereof.
There is a motion, Julie seconded, any more discussion? Amendment, objection, so hearing none? On second reading and ordinance regulating the use, manufacture, sale, and distribution of uniforms, insignias, and other acotryments of uniform law enforcement agencies in the municipality of Isulan Sultan Kudarat and prescribing penalties for violation thereof is hereby approved.
And Mr. Chair, this, Mr. Chair shall be deliberated on third reading for final.
And this matter is scheduled for third reading in today's session. Next item, Madam Secretary.
So next proposed measure on second reading is based on the committee report of the Committee on Good Government, Ethics, Labor, and Employment.
The chairperson of the committee, Honorable Galingo is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, what is being requested of the Sanggoyang Bayan is to create two positions. The first is the off, is the position of Vet Four with SG twenty-two with a yearly annual salary of an estimated of five hundred four thousand six hundred thirty pesos and one municipal cooperative development officer SG SG eighteen, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I mixed up the amount. The annual salary of the Vet Four with SG twenty-two is about seven hundred seventy-two thousand three hundred eighteen pesos and eighty centavos. Well, that for the office of the municipal cooperative development officer with a salary grade of eighteen is five hundred four thousand six hundred thirty per annum. And the young, the position of the municipal cooperative development officers, Mr. Chair, is really mandatory while the position of Vet Four is really needed in the office of the municipal agriculturist, culturist rather.
At present, though we haven't created yet the position of municipal veterinarian, how does the office operate?
We have a vet, veterinarian, a licensed veterinarian at the office right now. However, he's not, he is just occupying the position of senior agriculturist. So in essence, he's performing two jobs. A senior agriculturist assigned in, in, in a couple or three barangays, while he's also acting as our veterinarian.
Mr. Chair. Honorable Domaran is recognized. Honorable Dalanon, I mean.
Ah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh can we know how, what is the salary grade of now our veterinarian?
Of our present veterinarian, sir, it's about salary, salary grade fifteen, siguro, sir, I believe, kasi parang yun man ang salary ng senior agriculturist.
With the present.
SG fifteen or?
SG fifteen? Mag-aggad gitsya sang SG twenty-two nga amount. How about our PS cap? There is no problem?
Nah, there is no problem, sir. Um, according to our budget officer, the, the PS cap is already reaching its limit, but still within the lim, but we're still within the limit. The, the disadvantage in the part of the local government unit is our, ano lang, the decrease of our um, after-year privileges.
At present, how many? At present, uh, atonibly, how many SG twenty-two positions do we have in our LGU structure?
Mr. Chair, I am not, I am not, I do, I'm not very familiar, but our staff has said that there's another SG twenty-two who is our assistant treasurer, that's.
Assistant treasurer, that's the only position, SG twenty-two, under our plantilia.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Dalanon.
I think the position of a veteran, veterinarian shall be coupled with the development of our slaughterhouse. We need to develop our slaughterhouse because the veterinarian I think shall be on duty in the slaughterhouse.
We will, we will relay the information to our municipal agriculturist, sir. And we always, and Engineer Delanan is always in contact with him anyway.
Our secretary has something to say, um, off the record. Our secretary has something to say um, off the record.
For the passing of a resolution enacting an ordinance, creating the position of one veterinarian four with SG twenty-two.
There's a motion, any secondary, Julie seconded, any more discussion, amendment, objection, so there being none. A resolution is hereby passed enacting an ordinance creating the position of one veterinarian four with salary salary grade twenty-two in the municipality of Isulan, providing for their duties, functions, and appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes.
Secondly, Mister Chair, move for a similar res- uh similar resolution enacting an ordinance creating the position of one municipal cooperative development officer with salary grade eighteen in Isulan.
There's a motion, Julie seconded, any more discussion, amendment, objection, hearing none. A resolution is hereby passed enacting an ordinance creating the position of municipal cooperative development officer with salary grade eighteen, providing for their duties and functions, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. What's the pleasure of the committee?
Mister Chair, move that it be calendered on third reading this session.
And this measure is calendared for third reading in today's session.
So we have no more items under second reading, we'll proceed now to the uh third and final reading of the proposed measures. So first, we have uh the proposed resul- the proposed ordinance. So the proposed ordinance regulating the use, manufacture, sale, and distribution of uniforms, insignias, and other accoutrements of uniform law enforcement agencies in the municipality of Isulan Sultan Kudarat, and prescribing penalties for violations thereof.
The proponent is recognized.
Thank you Mister, Mister Chair. So for a third and final reading, I move for an ordinance regulating the use, manufacture, sale, and distribution of uniforms, insignias, and other accoutrements of uniform law enforcement agencies in the municipality of Isulan Sultan Kudarat, and prescribing penalties for violations thereof.
There's a motion, any secondary, any objection? So there being none. On third and final reading, an ordinance is hereby passed regulating the use, manufacture, sale, and distribution of uniforms, insignias, and other accoutrements of uniform law enforcement agencies in the municipality of Isulan Sultan Kudarat, and prescribing penalties for violations thereof. Next item, Madam Secretary.
So next is the on third and final reading, the ordinance creating the position of veterinarian five with salary grade twenty-two in the local government unit of Isulan.
Honorable Garingo is recognized.
Thank you Mister Chair. On third and final reading, I move for the passing of a resolution enacting an ordinance creating the position of one veterinarian four with SG twenty-two in the municipality of Isulan, providing for their duties and functions, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes.
There's a motion, Julie seconded, any objection? So there being none. A resolution is hereby passed enacting an ordinance creating the position of veterinari four, veterinarian four with salary grade twenty-two in the municipality of Isulan Sultan Kudarat, providing for their duties, functions, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes.
Next Mister Chairman, on third and final reading, I move for the passing of a resolution enacting an ordinance creating the position of one municipal cooperative development officer with salary grade eighteen in the municipality of Isulan, providing for their duties and functions, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes.
There's a motion, Julie seconded, any objection? There being none. A resolution is hereby passed enacting an ordinance creating the position of one municipal cooperative development officer with salary grade eighteen, providing for their duties and functions, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. Next item, Madam Secretary.
So we have already exhausted the items in order, business your honor. We'll proceed now to the unassigned business.
Any matter you wanted to raise under unassigned business, Madam Secretary?
So, may we take this opportunity to award this resolution of commendation to Miss Vivian Villagrasia Vicente for her exemplary and meritorious service rendered to the municipality of Isulan as our former employee, our former staff of the Sangguniang Bayan.
As a fitting tribute to our former employee, Ma'am Vivian uh Villagrasia Vicente, we would like to present this uh resolution as our token of appreciation for her invaluable service to the office of the Sangguniang Bayan, serving the LGU for...
From October twenty-two two thousand to July twenty twenty four.
From October twenty twenty-two two thousand two to?
July thirty-one twenty twenty four.
To July thirty-one twenty twenty four. Ma'am Bebs, please accept this uh token of gratitude and appreciation for and behalf of the Sangguniang Bayan. May we request our secretary to please read the content of the resolution.
So this is an excerpt from the minutes of the regular session of the twenty-first Sangguniang Bayan of Isulan held on the fifth day of August twenty twenty four. So at the SB session hall. So this is resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one hundred sixteen. Resolution of commendation to Miss Vivian Villagrasia Vicente for her exemplary and meritorious service rendered to the municipality of Isulan as employee of LGU Isulan under the office of the Sangguniang Bayan from October two two thousand to July thirty-one twenty twenty four. Whereas Miss Vivian Villagrasia Vicente started her career in the public service when she was hired by the LGU Isulan in a, in a contract of service status last October two two thousand. Her competence coupled with with her hard work, integrity, and dedication had made her promoted to a permanent position of administrative aide three, discharging her duties with highest diligence and competence that redounded to the best interests of public service. Whereas Miss Vivian Villagrasia Vicente was given the opportunity to apply in another ag- agency wherein she was hired by the municipal trial court of Isulan as court stenographer. Whereas Miss Vivian Villagrasia Vicente has proven her worth in the field of public service, painstakingly discharging her duties and responsibilities with dedication and hard work. Whereas Vivian, or Bebs as fondly called by her friends and colleagues, is known to be a cheerful person with positive personality, a friend to everyone, and being looked up to as a dedicated and loving wife and a doting mother. Whereas her meritorious service rendered to this municipality has undoubtedly contributed to the development and to the best interests of these Isulanans that will be etched forever in the history of this municipality. Now therefore, after due deliberation and upon motion of Honorable Moises D'Arin, duly seconded by Honorable Marvin D'Arin, and Honorable Ryan Dumaran, and on joint sponsorship, be it resolved as it is hereby resolved to give due commendation to Miss Vivian Villagrasia Vicente for her exemplary and meritorious service rendered to the municipality of Isulan as employee of of LGU Isulan under the office of the Sangguniang Bayan from October two 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 thousand to July thirty-one twenty twenty four. Resolve finally that copy of this resolution be given to Miss Vivian Vicente as a fitting recognition for her invaluable contribution to the development of this municipality. So certified correct, yours, signed yours truly, Secretary to the SB, attested sign, Honorable Carlo Efe Piado, MPA, Municipal Vice Mayor, Presiding Officer, concord by her honor, by his honor, the municipal mayor of September three twenty twenty four. Signed, Attorney Arnold H. Sarmada, municipal mayor.
Please uh accept our token of appreciation to, Ma'am Bebs, please accept our token of appreciation sa' yung mga ano, uh service yodari sa LGU Isulan. May we request the members of this august body for a photo opportunity? At exactly twelve fifty-seven today, September seventy-three twenty-four, the session is now adjourned.